We'll now reconvene the special city council meeting. Ms. City Attorney, please report the closed session action.
Item number one, the city council gave direction to its legal counsel. And number two, the city council discussed the city manager's evaluation. That ends the closed session report.
Thank you. The special city council meeting is now adjourned. I would like to call or order the regular city council meeting. City Clerk Duarte, will you please take role?
Councilmember Ashton.
Present.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Saab.
Here.
Mayor Protem Frometta.
Present.
And Mayor Pacheco.
Present. I'd now like to call up Alvin Galindo, Downey State Church of Later Day Saints for the invocation. Everyone, please rise.
My kind and gracious heavenly father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for the blessings that you have bestowed upon us in our fair city. We ask this evening that as we gather in our council chambers that you please have the spirit be with us as we talk about the issues of the city. We ask a special blessing for the council members and all of their families. We ask a special blessing for the first responders, please watch over them and take care of them. In these things, we ask humbly in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. I'd now like to invite up Liliana Hernandez, Downey Youth Commissioner, for the pledge of allegiance.
To your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I would now like to proceed over to the city council member announcements, requests for future agenda items and conference meeting reports. I'll start to my far left with Councilmember Saab.
Madam Mayor, welcome everyone. Trying to keep my comments short tonight. A special welcome to Executive Director of the Downey Chamber of Commerce, Michael Calvert, with us today. Welcome, Michael Calvert. And also the President, Kerry Uva. Thank you. And also we have board members Maria Fernandez and Michael Chirco, representing the chamber. So thank you, chamber members. Wanted to also thank the chamber on that note for the State of the City event a few weeks ago. Former Mayor Rick Rodriguez did a great job in updating our residents of all the good things happening in the community. You know, the many accomplishments he had in this past year. So I just want to thank the chamber for, once again, providing a good venue for the residents to come out and listen about their government at play. I had the opportunity to visit the State Gallery last Friday. They had a wonderful event. Basically, it was an anniversary of an organization called Home Field Advantage. And Home Field Advantage is a group that started from a few members here in the community to provide after-school programs, mostly sports programs, for kids in our community. And it's amazing, I think it's a one year and a half, how much it's grown. The city did help with that. They helped, we did help with some equipment when it first started. But it's just amazing how much it's grown, the appetite for, you know, greater groups in the community to provide greater access to, whether it's sports or music, like the Downey Foundation for Educational Opportunities, or whatever it may be. But I just want to thank all those that are involved. I know he's not here, but Sasha Vandermost was really the one that spearheaded that. And I just want to thank him publicly. All of the council colleagues here have the opportunity to, and I know there's some in the audience that were there, attend the homeless count last week. This is, I don't know, was it probably the fourth or fifth annual? And it's always, Lisa Fox was there, thank you for helping organizing it. She was always, as every year, instrumental in doing that. And it really was a great event to participate in identifying our homeless neighbors in the community. And obviously, it's a very sobering time to see people at night, you know, in dark crevices of the community, sleeping or whatnot. But I just wanted to thank all those many volunteers. I think this is probably the most well-attended event of that nature that I've been to the last few years. And I'm sure some of our council colleagues speak some more about that. But thank you to all those that came out. Just a couple of quick events that are coming up. The Century 21 Peak over on Florence, just past Tweedy is having a blood drive next Tuesday. Everyone is welcome from noon to six. And then I'm sure someone's going to talk about the astronaut commemoration, so I'll leave that for later. And then on February 10th, we're having a magnetization study community meeting here in the council chambers. That's Monday, the February 10th, from seven to nine. With that, you may not know, about a year and a half ago, I think it was former Councilmember Fernando Vasquez and I asked for us to look into, for the city to look into how to possibly have a little bit more uniformity, maybe that's not the right word, but look into how we can regulate maybe the style of homes so they conform more with the community it's in and things of that nature. We want to make sure that we get the community's input on that. So if you can make it, if you have something to say, we definitely invite you to come out, February 10th. It's a Monday from seven to nine here in the council chambers. And then lastly, I'm going to keep mentioning this, but I know who council's going, that the TLC 5K Walk Run is on February 29th. And that's at Apollo Park. If you don't know what TLC is, TLC is a great organization associated with our school district that really helps kids in needs. As we always say, I sit on that board, as we always say, I mean, life happens. People have family members that die, tragedy happens all the time. And that's, the organization does incredible things. Over 2,500 students are assisted, and it's actually much more than that, but that's what's documented. And just ask if you can, come out and show your support and walk if you can. The 5K starts at 9:00 a.m., actually I think that's wrong, I think it starts at eight, at Apollo Park on February 29th. And I thought we saw, oh yeah, there she is, Kerry Red Fox. She's always a great superstar at Dottie, and she's a huge supporter of all things kids and especially the TLC. So that concludes my comments. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to now go on over to Mayor Protem, Claudia Ferreira.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Such a pleasure to see you all. I always like to say, strong communities are engaged communities. And so I enjoy seeing those of you that come to our council meetings and want to be engaged because you help our community continue to be strong. I had the opportunity over the last couple of weeks to attend some events. And certainly, it was a pleasure to go with Madam Mayor and our city manager, as well as our assistant city manager, on a Measure S tour. As you know, over the last year, we've undertaken quite a significant task in revitalizing and improving the infrastructure of our city through Measure S. And Mayor Pacheco and I had not had a complete opportunity to look at some of these projects. And I have to tell you, we are very, very excited to very soon be able to unveil Fire Station 1, as well as Fire Station 3. We had the opportunity, we had the opportunity to also visit Golden Park. And really, we were speechless to look at the fantastic progress and the improvements that are going to be happening again across the board. We're always for standardization. And over the course of many years, we've had different names. The way our parks look were a little different. And thankfully, through this Measure S, we've been able to standardize from benches to the lighting to signage. And all of those things really not only bring value to our community, but they certainly, as we improve the parks, the surrounding neighborhoods, believe it or not, there's been studies done, that the neighboring community, those neighborhoods also increase in value. And so the Golden Park is going to be really a beautiful park for District 1 with five additional. There was no canopies or areas for picnic tables, and now there's five of them. And so we were really, we're really excited about that. February 8th, after a couple of delays due to inclement weather, we had to keep postponing the grand opening of Dennis the Menace Park. The ground was pretty saturated, as you know, we had severe rain, and we had to postpone the grand opening a couple of times. But we are looking forward to the grand opening, that's coming up February 8th, Saturday at 9:00 a.m. And we look forward to welcoming residents to our reopening of Dennis the Menace Park. So those of you that have been involved heavily in Measure S, we want to say thank you. And certainly, I know that our fire department is anxious and it's awaiting the new fire stations. And what beautiful places you guys are, will be going into. Fire Station 1 is really a beauty, and I know Fire Station 3 is coming along. I also had the opportunity to attend the Downey Sister Cities event, the January winter party. We were able to stop by for just a bit on our way to another event with Contract Cities. And it's always a great thing to see a lot of the members of our community that are involved in certain organizations visit others. And so again, we see Downey for what it is. People that care about this community, that are involved in so many different organizations, doing really good things for the community. This last week, for the first time, as a council member and as Mayor Protem, I had the opportunity to attend the League of California Cities as a policy member, as a policy committee member. I will now be involved with the Governance, Transparency, and Labor Relations Policy Committee. And I'm looking forward to representing Downey in that capacity as well. We'll be looking at several bills over the course of this year. And again, ensuring that issues that pertain to Downey, the local issues, we continue to move forward. A couple of things that I want to invite you, aside from the grand opening on February 8th, is what my councilmember Saab mentioned, the North American Aviation Commemoration at the Space Center that is happening Friday, February 7th at 3:00 p.m. And also, we've discussed the coyotes out of Downey group that has been doing some good things. And there will be an outing at Apollo Park on Saturday, February 8th, at 10:30 in the morning. And please, please keep those notes ready. And there's been a lot of upgrades to our website, and we continue to make sure that the right information is posted. If you haven't yet downloaded the Downey app, please do so also. There's some good upgrades to that website as well. Madam Mayor, that will conclude my comments tonight.
Thank you. I will now proceed over to Councilmember Sean Ashton.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Had a busy couple of weeks over the past, since the last meeting. Went to the Keep Downey Beautiful cleanup that was last Saturday. Had over 70 volunteers out there. We were walking the downtown area, doing a lot of cleaning. One of the things that I noticed while I was out there walking, and I don't know if there's anything that can really be done with it, but there was a lot of defecation that was around the post office itself. And I don't know if, it appeared to be something other than... Like a dog, possibly human. But if there's something that we can do to, you know, work in that area to help the, or at least let the post office know that they should be taking care of their area a little bit better? And, you know, letting us know if there's something we can do to help with some of those issues as well. So I mean, it's just kind of a little bit unsightly with having that just right out in the middle of everything. So if that's something we can work on, I'd appreciate that. Other than that, it was very well attended, 70-plus volunteers. So if you were out there volunteering, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you to Lisa Fox, who was out there helping us out as well. Carol Rowling and the Keep Downey Beautiful Committee that was out there helping out as well. One thing that the Keep Downey Beautiful Committee would like is people to attend the committee meetings as well. So if you have spare time Wednesday afternoons, it is the second Wednesday of every month, they meet in the second floor up here at 3:30 p.m. They would love to have community participation at the committee meetings as well to help us discuss, you know, areas of concern that might need attention, to help with the home beautification awards program and various other things that Keep Downey Beautiful deals with. So if you are interested in getting some, just getting involved in the city a little bit more, it's a really, you know, non-stressful meeting. Just show up, add your two cents, and move on, they would love to have you there. So that's the second Wednesday of every month. It's at 3:30 p.m., it meets in the second floor up here in the training room. Other than that, I also was in Sacramento last week for a policy committee meeting. So I sit on the Transportation, Communication, and Public Works Committee for the League of California Cities as well. And again, we were just kind of getting started on bills that we were going to be supporting or opposing for this year. There's not a lot going on with that committee. The big push was last, the last couple of years when they had the SB 1 funding for the roads and that. So there's not a lot going on with that committee right now. I think the big committee to be on, as far as with what's going on, is obviously housing. That's going to be a big concern this upcoming year. And I'm sure our mayor will have something to add to that. The Keep Downey Beautiful is also having the next cleanup on the 15th of February, that's at 9:00 in the morning. And they will be meeting on Hall Road in front of Western Pacific Pulp Paper. So Hall Road, it'll be just off of Woodruff. So Woodruff, north of Stewart and Gray, just south of Firestone, there's a little road there, right by the railroad tracks, and they'll be meeting there to do the cleanup. Other than that, I was wondering, for city staff, if we can start looking into possibly putting roundabouts on certain streets? I've seen other cities are starting to put roundabouts on like smaller residential streets. I think, you know, the one thing that I get a lot of complaints about is, people are speeding on my street, I want speed bumps. And speed bumps aren't necessarily, you know, something that's effective, but I think the roundabouts might be. And so if we can start looking at, you know, possibly what larger residential streets might be suitable to have a roundabout at like certain intersections, I think that would help with people using those, some of those streets as drag strips. And, you know, and possibly, you know, help with planting more trees in the center of the roundabout and kind of does more than a couple of things at the same time. So if that's something we can look at and come back to council with, I'd appreciate it. And with that, oh, one more thing. SB 50 is an important housing bill that's being proposed in the state senate right now. It's going to be going to the floor either today or tomorrow. We're encouraging a no vote on it. What this does is this allows the state to take away our ability to zone in certain areas next to transit corridors. So basically, any major street where a bus line goes down, the state can take away our right to zone and then can put up the five-story apartment buildings on those streets. And regardless of what's there already. It doesn't take into account any type of housing for affordable housing needs. It's just at-market, whatever. So we're encouraging a no vote. And my ask of you, and I'm going to give you a phone number, it's for Senator Bob Archileta. He's our local senator who will be voting on it. And I'm just asking you if you can flood his office with phone calls. His phone number for his office is 916-651-4032. And let him know that this is not right for our city. With that, that concludes my comments. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Now, next over to Councilmember Rick Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for allowing me to sit in this seat. I'm very honored to have the opportunity, last week, we hosted an event here in our city. We have a group called Downey Care Collaborative, which is our foster children outreach program, from park and recreation, to police, to high school and college counselors, to DCFS. We're very fortunate, we have a huge success with the DCC. All of our kids, our foster kids graduate. All of our foster kids gain employment afterwards, after they age out of the foster system. So this has now become something of a practice that we want to push towards LA County, other cities in LA County. So our Downey Care Collaborative had a lunch that we hosted here for other cities. And we had representatives from Montebello, Norwalk, Bellflower, Artesia, Whittier, and Santa Fe Springs. They all came to see how we do it here in Downey, and they wanted to create the same thing within their city to help their foster kids. So it's a huge push for our foster kids. They are the fastest-growing piece of the homeless community, is our foster kids. So if we can get them to graduate and get them to get a job and start their own families or become successful, that's how you end homelessness. Secondly, today, I sit on the LA Oversight Board for District 4, for the Oversight Tax Board. So I sat in that meeting today. And then I'd like to also bring up Madam Mayor and to our city manager. We have a veterans subcommittee. And our veterans subcommittee, we have a lot of great folks that are part of it. I chair the meeting. And it's been brought to my attention that we want to add some names of fallen Downey residents to our Veterans Memorial. So we needed, we need to develop the criteria. So I need my colleagues to help me develop that criteria for Downey high school students, residents, whoever grew up in our city, whatever the criteria may be, we're going to start adding names to that Veterans Memorial. And then also Siaka. Siaka, you know, one of the commissioners at Siaka, when I was mayor, we started a thing called Mayor's Choice, where the city actually would contribute half, and then Siaka would contribute half. And once a month, any resident could go to Siaka and get one free dog per month. So we've now changed that to Commissioner's Choice, and the mayor, she's kept it going. So now, actually, two dogs can be adopted per month, as well as other cities. I know five other cities have adopted this program. So if we can get seven to 10 dogs adopted per month, that's just a fast track to help these forever families get their homes for their dogs. That's it. Sure, prepared for me this past couple of weeks. Madam Mayor, it's all yours.
Thank you. So again, everyone, welcome to our city council meeting. I had a busy last several weeks. On January 16th, I attended the Youth Commissioners Meeting. It was important for me to get to know these young high school students. So that's what the youth commissioners consist of. It's high school students here in the city of Downey who want to get involved in the city, who want to obtain leadership skills and to provide them civic and local government education. And so it was an opportunity for me to meet our youth and get to know them so that I can gather ideas on how to make the youth commissioner group a more efficient and effective group. Also, I attended the town hall meeting, there was a town hall meeting in Cudahy on January 17th. This was in regards to the jet fuel incident. Fortunately, our city was minimally impacted. It was our neighboring city of Cudahy, Cudahy and South Gate, who were more severely impacted. But I want to thank our fire chief for having our personnel there. They were there for two days. They were there, one on the press conference on the day of the incident, and then they were also there for the town hall meeting. So I want to thank you for having them there. And I just want to end with, my heart really goes out to those affected in those cities because a lot of children and adults were affected because of the incident. Also, last week, I attended the League of California Cities New Mayors Conference in Sacramento. It was an opportunity to get a refresher course as to how to run an effective council meeting, the rules of council. I had taken it three years ago when I first got on council, but this was just, again, a refresher course for me. While in Sacramento, I also attended my policy committee. So I'm the chair of the League of California Cities Housing Economic Development, no, actually Housing Community and Economic Development Policy Committee. It's a committee that we're mostly focused on housing. So we are extremely busy, especially with this bill SB 50, which would allow high-density housing within our city. It's a bill that we do, most cities, actually, for the most part, all cities in California do not approve of because it takes away our local control. It dictates where we should add high-density housing within our city. And so as a committee, we have, we voted opposed unless amended. And also, as here in the city of Downey, I did sign a letter that the city of Downey also opposes this bill unless amended. So I also encourage you to call our senator, voice your opinions, let the senator know to vote no on this bill because this bill needs to be taken out of the senate by the end of this month. And they will be voting by January 31st as to whether it moves on to the assembly. So again, I urge you all, please call your state senator. But not right now. Also, I, today I attended the Career Day over at St. Raymond's. It's always a pleasure talking to the youth. I was able to talk to middle school students over at the school, explain to them my role as an attorney, as mayor, and to motivate them to pursue more in life. And that's always something that I hold near and dear to my heart. Also, today I attended DUSD's Character Counts event. It was a pleasure seeing our police chief, Captain Murray, and also our fire chief in attendance. Thank you. So Character Counts is deeply embedded within our school district. It teaches our kids the concept of citizenship, which is also here at City Hall. Caring, fairness, trustworthiness, respect, and responsibility. And I just want to mention that civility is extremely important. It's always better to be nice to each other because when you're nice to each other, it makes an impact. It makes an impact because you're helping your fellow neighbor. And that's, in reality, how we get anything done in life. And so I think this was a great event, and it was truly a pleasure to attend. I did want to mention a matter of concern. There's a resident complained to me about trash along the railroad tracks. This would be near Woodruff and Stewart and Gray. All right. Now, on to presentations. Oh, sorry. Upcoming events, I knew I was forgetting something. So we have an magnetization study that will be at the Barbara Riley Center, and that is on February 10th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. All right. Now on to presentations. For our first certificate of recognition, I'd like to invite up Councilmember Rick Rodriguez to assist me with.
Okay, well, let's see if I can get through this quickly. So, well, September 6th, had a little bit of a medical hiccup. And so I had some surgery on the 6th, and then after kind of pursuing to that, I had to be transported to the hospital on two separate occasions. One on September 23rd and one on October 6th. Both times, our Downey Fire Department, not only did they pick me up and carry me off to the hospital, but the second time was really the most effective time. I lost two and a half pints of blood during a six-hour period, and I could have bled out. And so our fire department, they were very willing to listen. And I think that's what separates us from most cities. You see, I knew that I was bleeding, and I was bleeding, I was bleeding to death, I knew it. But I also knew that I was going into cardiac arrest because I had an Apple Watch, my children forced me to wear. And the cardiac, and the Apple Watch told me that I was going into cardiac arrest, and so, and going to AFib. I'm really trying hard to keep myself together without reaching across this podium.
I'm really trying hard to keep myself together without reaching across this podium, Herman. So please, give me the patience I deserve, okay? So when that happened, I told the paramedics and the firefighters that got to my home, I told them what it read. And so they, immediately they listened. And they gave me morphine and transported me to the hospital. Cardiogram then dealt me right away. My body stopped making its own blood, and my bladder was completely cluttered with blood. So if it wasn't for these guys, I wouldn't be sent here. So I told the Fire Chief that I wanted to recognize these people because they saved my life. And I said, "Well..." He says, "Well, they save lives every day." And I said, "I get that. I understand that." I said, "However, they saved my life." And I want to be able to tell that story again and again and again. Because our Downey firefighters and our Downey police officers, they do this stuff, but we don't always hear about it. And the Chief's right. They save lives every day. We don't hear about it. So I'm telling you today that from the bottom of my heart, I thank you for saving my life. Thank you. With that in mind, if I could please call up Eric, I don't know how to pronounce your last name, Eric. Please help me. X... Say again?
X.
All right. Eric, I gotta try. X-Den. X-Den. Wow, you guys all have crazy last names. Adam Ziprian, is that correct? Not here today. Manuel Nunez. Finally, somebody with a normal last name. And Tim Clark.
Just thank you to former mayor. On that day, we just got a call. Nobody knew his address. Nobody knew where he lived, really, on that call. So on most calls, we kind of just walk into your house, and we just kind of see the whole situation. And I don't think we even knew who he was, so we got him back in the ambulance. So we pretty much, we treat everybody here, city of Downey, like they're the mayor. So he really didn't get anything extra from us. He just got our normal day-to-day things that we do. So he may think we went above and beyond, but I can speak for the rest of the guys. We pretty much do above and beyond for everybody. So if you ever call us, expect us, we're going to treat you like the mayor.
This is just another prime example of how great our Downey Fire Department and our Police Department is. Thank you again, guys. Thank you for everything that you do. Next is a Mayor's Impact Award. So the Mayor's Impact Award is given to somebody who has an impact in the city, has an impact amongst the residents or amongst the youth within our city. And this person is a remarkable person, and I'm going to invite up our Mayor Pro Tem, Claudia Fermetta, to help me with this presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. As the mayor just mentioned, this special award is for somebody that is really making an impact in our community. And we have a lot of people that are doing great things throughout the city of Downey, whether it is our first responders or people that devote a lot of time and effort to tremendous causes. When we talked about this individual, hands down, the mayor and I discussed this particular person, her heart, how kind and giving Carrie is. We really, over the course of the last several years, Carrie, we have seen the service and the love that you give, not just your students, particularly at Doty Middle School. I will say her name, because as you know, it is up on our presentation board. This recognition is Carrie Lynn Redfox. And this woman has been a counselor at Doty Middle School for many years. Her experience as an educator has been with our Downey Unified School District for many, many years. And she has served and participated in so many committees and organizations within Downey Unified, but also within our city. Of course, she's known to many for her contributions in her involvement with the Rose Float Association, certainly the LA Conservancy. She has been a member of the LA Arboretum since the year 2009. She's been very involved with her church, Downey United Methodist Church, for many years, also as a Sunday School teacher. She's been a chaperone for Ms. Downey, a member of the Gypsy Johnson Auxiliary, and most recently, she's been helping with our assistines. And let me tell you that while there's a lot of people in our community, as I said, that do a lot of these things, I think what drew our attention to Carrie is, as I said at the beginning, your heart and your kindness, Carrie. The impact that you are making in the lives of so many people and the students that you are touching. Many, many months ago, or maybe not that many, but some months ago, I read on a post, because you've been involved in the Shoes That Fit. You founded this organization at Doty in 2008, and this is for students in need. And it really struck a chord in me, because you talked about this student that had been running, that had been doing physical education, and the shoes of this student were really falling apart. They really had holes. And you asked this student if he had his P shoes, and he said, "These are my P shoes." Well, it turns out those are the only shoes this individual, this student, had. And so Carrie, you talked to your other teacher friends during the lunch hour, and then you went out and you bought a pair of Vans shoes for this student. And when you gave those to the student, he said, "That had not been necessary," right? "That was not necessary." And I think that over the last 48 hours, as a nation, we have seen the fragility of life in the loss of a huge sports icon. And we see that what we do sometimes gets lost in the monotony of life or the busyness of life, but those acts of kindness, they're ripples. And what you're doing with the service through the Rose Float Association, the Wings of Hope, that you brought all of, and I know it was you, and there were other people that came alongside of you because they believed in that vision, but when we are kind and genuine, people see that. And I think that it is important to recognize that, because we want more individuals like you. We want you to continue, and some of us are fighting battles that other people don't see or don't know about, but yet, we know who knows, and we know who sees. So without further ado, there's a quote that I found that says that we need to be known for our kindness and our grace. And I think this quote is perfect for you, because I think you'll be known for your kindness and grace. So without further ado, Carrie Lynn Redfox.
So I just want to add one more thing. Carrie, I know you worked with us for our first Girls on Fire workshop, and I remember a couple of the students mentioning that you were like a second mom to them. So you truly have had an impact on the students over at Doty Middle School, but also for the girls at the Rose Float Association. So in recognition of your selfless dedication and always going above and beyond for others, your heartless efforts and accomplishments have been of enormous value to our community and have helped to further the common goal of making our city a better place for all. Thank you.
First of all, thank you so much for this honor. I honestly don't feel worthy, because there's so many other people who do so many beautiful things, and I just happen to be the lucky one that's recognized for what I do. You mentioned that people are going through things that you don't know about, and I think that's what I always try to keep in mind every morning when I start my day with my kids, that every student that walks through my door is probably going through something I don't know about. But I want to create a safe place. I want to create a place that's warm and welcoming, and I want to be maybe that only hug that that child gets for the day, or that maybe word of encouragement that they needed just to keep them moving forward. And honestly, I try to give what I can to my students, but I get so much more back from them than I'm sure I give of myself. And they touch my life every day in many, many ways, and I really give God the glory for putting me where I am today. I prayed when I was younger that he would put me somewhere where... Where I could make a difference. Sorry. And God pointed me in the direction of education, first as an elementary teacher, and then as a counselor. And I do thank God every day for allowing me the opportunity to just be there and be a part of Doty Middle School, and to be a part of my students' lives and parents' lives as well. So I love my city. I love my community. Born here, live here, play here, and will always be here. And I love my husband and my two boys and my parents, and really everyone that supports just giving back to the community, because that's really what we should do every day. So thank you again. Appreciate it.
I just wanted to also recognize, and I know I'm probably going to embarrass them, but Carrie's parents, George and Leah, Francisco, are celebrating their 43rd wedding anniversary tonight. Excuse me, 53rd, 53rd. So we do have something for you. We want to say congratulations. Would you come up? So it is their 53rd wedding anniversary.
Our next presentation is a Certificate of Appointment to the Green Task, District Four, and I'd like to invite up Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to bring up Jamie Shoup Bray up to the podium. Is she here tonight? Yes, she is. Well, Jamie is a perfect addition to the Green Task Force. Jamie, not only is she a former journalist, just like me, but she's also so passionate about the environment. And as you know, with all of the changes that we are seeing, and with the need to continue to support local issues and make sure that we go in the right direction when it comes to solutions for our environment. There was an opening within the Green Task Force in District Four, and I remember as I was campaigning, knocking on Jamie's door and having a conversation about many things, but certainly I was very pleased when Jamie shared with me her interest to being involved with the Green Task Force. So she, her background is, again, 20 years in community journalism across California and Missouri, or Missoura, as native Missourians are mentioned, both as a full-time staffer and as a freelance writer. 10 years ago, she joined the staff at Descanso Gardens in La Cañara, Flindrich Botanic Garden with a world-renowned Camellia collection. During her tenure there, she's worked in marketing, public relations, website management, and membership. And she currently is the Grants Manager and Newsletter Editor. I believe that Jamie is a fantastic addition to the Green Task Force. And Jamie, welcome aboard. I look forward to having you as a Commissioner, and I look forward to your involvement and also your recommendations.
Thank you so much.
Would you like to say anything?
I just want to say that 70 years ago, my parents bought the house that I live in in Downey, and I grew up here. I can remember going to the Downey Plunge, riding my bike to the library, and walking barefoot on the floor in the summer, because we didn't have air conditioning, and it was cool there. Lots of changes in Downey. It's a vibrant, wonderful place to live. I am so proud to be able to serve this community, and I want to thank you for this opportunity.
The next presentation is a Proclamation for Human Trafficking Prevention Month. So in case you're not aware, January is Human Trafficking Month, an awareness of human trafficking, which does occur. And for...
And for this presentation, I'd like to invite up, Courage Forward. So if you're a member of Courage Forward. And Cecilia, please come forward. So Cecilia, who is coming forward, she has been a strong advocate for human trafficking and providing human trafficking awareness. So I'd like to invite up Cecilia to say a couple of words and to also mention Courage Forward, which is a veterans group, and how they've been involved in the human trafficking awareness.
Thank you, Mayor Blanca Pacheco. Well, like I said, like Mayor said, we were very honored to put together this event. And it was my pleasure and honor to have this time collaborate with Courage Forward. As you all know, they are veteran-based organization and they, the three pillars is community and youth. And within that, within youth is unfortunately where all the human trafficking is happening. You know, California is one of the main states where a lot of human trafficking happens. And what brought my attention to this issue is that California has the three main cities with a lot of child sex trafficking, which is San Diego, San Francisco, and here in Los Angeles. And here in Los Angeles, according to CAS, which is the Coalition to Abolish Slavery and Trafficking, we have 17 cities with a lot of reports of human trafficking. So again, it was our pleasure and honor to put this event together. We were very honored and happy to have the City Council, Mayor Blanca Pacheco, former Mayor Rick Rodriguez, which is a big advocate now, working with Patrick Ellerson and other events. And also Mayor Protem Claudia from NTA. And we're looking forward to keep working for them. We were very happy also to have the School Board of Education, which is also on board to bring awareness since it's a bill that is the AB 1227, where it's mandated, where schools from middle school and high schools, they have to provide at least 20 minutes of education that includes human trafficking. And also, Mayor, former Mayor Rick Rodriguez, gave us the honor to invite us to the clergy meeting. We have already bring Patrick Ellerson. Patrick Ellerson is a wonderful man. He's practically like an angel. He's my mentor, my inspiration. He has other organizations. It's called MSAD. That's the Men Standing Against Trafficking. And every third of the month, we stand in a street in Long Beach, which is Victoria in Long Beach, where it's a lot of girls. You can see the girls walking. A lot of people think they're prostitutes. Yes, for your information, 85% of the prostitutes, they're not really prostitutes. They've been trafficked. So it's a lot of information, it's a lot of education that we need to get to help these people. Because we're gonna say, it's not gonna happen in my city, it's not gonna happen in my backyard. Thank you so much.
So I have here a proclamation of Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Whereas human trafficking erodes personal dignity and destroys a moral fabric of society, it is an affront to humanity that tragically reaches all parts of the world, including our community. Each day in cities, suburbs, rural areas, and tribal lands, people of every age, gender, race, religion, and nationality are devastated by this grave offense. During Human Trafficking Prevention Month, we reaffirm our unwavering commitment to eradicate this horrific injustice. Whereas trafficking crimes are perpetriated, I can't speak, perpetuated by transnational criminal enterprises, gangs, and cruel individuals. Through forced fraud, coercion, and sexual exploitation of minors, traffickers rob countless individuals of their dignity and freedom, splinter families, and threaten the safety of our communities. In all its forms, human trafficking is an intolerable blight on any society dedicated to freedom, individual rights, and the rule of law. Whereas human trafficking is often hidden, is a hidden crime that knows no boundaries. By some estimates, as many as 24.9 million people are trapped in a form of modern slavery around the world. Human traffickers exploit others through forced labor or commercial sex, and traffickers profit from their victims' horrifying suffering. The evil of human trafficking must be defeated. We remain relentless in our resolve to bring perpetrators to justice, to protect survivors and to help them heal, and to prevent further victimization and destruction of innocent lives. Now therefore, I, Blanca Pacheco, Mayor of the United States of, actually Mayor of Downey, we need to correct that. Mayor of Downey, do hereby proclaim January 2020 as Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And for all the individuals here at Courage Forward, I have here a lapel pin because I am the mayor of Downey.
And really quick, Mayor Pass, the pins, I forgot to, last night I was opposed and I was very, very happy to see it that Aaron Rodgers from the Packers is gonna be also bringing awareness in the Super Bowl. So yes, so you know, in big events like the Super Bowl, the Grand Prix, the World Cup and all of that, when it's a lot of money and people from other state and with fun involved, is where a lot of human trafficking happens.
We will now take a quick two-minute recess. We will now reconvene our council meeting. Next items, next two items on our agenda are public hearings. Our first is to request to amend various sections of the Downey Municipal Code to comply with state legislation related to large family daycare uses within residentially zoned properties. Introduce an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Downey approving a Zone Text Amendment, thereby amending various sections of Article 9 of the Municipal Code related to large family daycare uses in residentially zoned properties. The hour having arrived, the public hearing is now open. City Clerk Duarte, do you have the proof of publication?
Yes, Mayor.
Is there a motion and a second to receive and file?
Second.
So ordered by the Mayor, City Clerk Duarte, have you received any correspondence on this matter?
We have not, Mayor.
Thank you. City Manager Levas, is there a staff report?
Madam Mayor, there is a staff report. It'll be provided by our City Planner, Crystal Landevosa.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight, we're asking you to consider a Zone Text Amendment for the Municipal Code as it relates to large family daycare uses in residential properties. The current regulations, as you'll see up on the screen, is for the current Municipal Code, which is consistent with the current Health and Safety Code of the State of California. There are two categories that the state recognizes. Small family daycare, which allows for the care of up to eight children, and large family daycare, which is a separate category allowing for the care of up to 14 children. The current Municipal Code, along with the prior Health and Safety Code, permitted a minor use permit to be required for large family daycare uses so that the staff would be able to evaluate several factors for those types of uses. This is changing, however, and it's the reason for the proposed amendment before you tonight. Senate Bill 234, which was signed by the Governor in September, has taken effect this month. This bill maintained the two separate categories for large and small family daycares. However, what was updated in the new bill is that all local authority to review the large family daycares was removed. So the minor CUP that was previously required can no longer be required when somebody is opening up a new large family daycare. In this slide, you can see some excerpts from the language that was adopted in the new Health and Safety Code. The overall intent of the new language is to identify that small family and large family residential daycares are meant to be considered the same. They are automatically permitted in all residential zones and they are to be considered residential uses themselves. As such, these are the proposed changes that we are making to our zoning code. We would remove all references to the requirement of a minor CUP for large family daycare. And this would bring us into compliance with the new Health and Safety Code. And this concludes staff's report. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any comments or questions?
Yeah, just really quick. So we can't give a business license or make them required to have a business license anymore?
That's correct.
So what type of regulations would they have? Whether it be from county, state, local, what regulations would a business like this have?
They're still required to meet the other requirements of the Health and Safety Code. They need to obtain a license from the state, which is usually handled through a county department. And the reason why the two categories remain small and large is that the large family daycares still have to maintain compliance with certain facility requirements that the fire department would be responsible for inspecting. And I believe the state fire marshal is supposed to provide an update to those standards as well.
And then since you bring up like fire standards and that, would that be, so any of them in our city, would that require our fire department looking and making sure they're okay? Or is that gonna be handled by the county?
It's the county. The county would make reference to our agency and then there would be coordination along those lines.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. I will now open this item up for a public comment. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak regarding this matter and this matter only?
Skinner Bill, S-K-I-N-N-E-R. SB 234, State of California, to comply with state legislation. That answers your question, Mr. Ashton. PL 1900155, requiring large and small family regulations. Well, fuck Sacramento. Fuck all of Sacramento and their Section 12.1597.46, Mr. Skinner. The health and safety of America has come to a conclusion in my mind that the inspiring world has nothing but niggers killing niggers in this country. And it needs to change. Eight out of 14 require administration decision under Section 9414.06, which is a standard MU. But why should I care about family? Why the fuck should I care about a large or a small family? We are all family, killing one another over greed. We look down on the people in our community, but Alex Sob says something different in his opening rebuttal about homeless people. You don't fucking care about homeless families that are large. You don't care about small families and their children that are homeless. So as long as God is alive, and I am a witness, I'm here to testify that God hates liars. And God will continue to point out the request to amend various fucking sections of the Downey Municipal Code as long as I'm not interrupted as I got the floor and I continue to be the body of the Legislative Brown Act. You're limiting my time each time you interrupt me. I get a total of five minutes, but you're gonna deny me that on Item 17 on Administration to make me speak for three fucking minutes.
Herman.
So going back on topic regarding 1900155 for the record, introduce the ordinance, an ordinance of City Council of the City of Downey, Ms. Mayor, the Zone Text Amendment, thereby amending various sections of Article 1X, a Roman numeral like in the Book of Romans, that God hates homosexuality.
Herman, please stay on topic.
But I, on part, under Municipal Code, can relate that I love large families. I love small families. I love any fucking family in a daycare because they're protected by the legislative body of Sacramento and not the Governor, that fucking idiot up there in the Capitol that I pay taxes to and the rest of us in Downey pay taxes to. So don't forget that we, the taxpayers, we commission you to hear what we feel is right or what is wrong in society. And as long as daycare protects our children from harm of being homeless, harm of those of you in this community that look down on daycare centers because you feel they abut to your community, fuck you on behalf of daycare centers. Let them be. We don't need people sleeping on our sidewalk and streets. We'd rather have them in a daycare, adult daycare, children daycare, and elderly daycare to avoid the fucking abuse of the legislative administration in the state Capitol. Gavin Newsom, you fucking faggot, do you hear me? I'm loud and clear. We want daycares in America. We want to protect our children. And as long as we got Dean Milligan as police chief, he will protect our children from the crimes against those who fuck children in the Catholic Church.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Alex Contreras. I actually came about the childcare amendment to Downey Municipal Code because I have a couple of policy recommendations based on a couple of studies that I've researched. One thing that we're actually looking into right now, I work for California MB, we're a housing advocacy group. One thing that we're looking into is allowing childcare facilities to be allowed in commercial areas. One being women of color tend to use transit the most and utilize these areas quite frequently throughout their day. And a lot of times, women of color are forced to choose to whether or not to afford childcare or to afford where they want to live. So they're often stuck between a rock and a hard place. And allowing these developments to be allowed in commercial centers often eases the burden of where they would like to live and also send their children for childcare. So if we're gonna look into amending the code, I would also suggest this for the City of Downey, allowing childcare centers to be available in commercial areas. So that way, they're central, they're located off-transit most likely, and it allows for more density. And studies have also shown that childcare centers that tend to run in commercial centers as opposed to residential centers stay in business longer. Because when you have a childcare facility in a residential area, the children of the neighborhood eventually age out. And if there's little to no movement in terms of families moving and coming and going, mainly because of the housing crisis, we have housing scarcity. We have elementary schools closing down here in the City of Downey. If we allow these childcare facilities to operate in commercial areas, it's more likely that they will stay in business because people will never stop going to work, if that makes sense. They might stop living in the community because they've been priced out, are displaced, or evicted from their homes. But they will never stop going to work in these areas, which means that they're more likely to bring their children with them, drop them off, and bring them home. So that's an idea that I'd like to flow out to the city just to look into and see what we can do about making it easier for women of color to take care of their kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion and a second to close public comment.
Good evening. So my comment is a little bit of a follow-up on the previous comment. So I think it's thankfully, it's great that the state is in some ways being more welcoming towards all sorts of businesses. And certainly, these businesses uh, businesses and certainly these businesses which serve working families. Um, so my comment though, I think it's important, uh, it would be great for the city now that you know, the next generation is here on the agenda. Um, it would be great for the city and the council members to think a little bit more broadly, like, you know, for example, like what are the children at these in these new daycare centers that will probably be opening, are the children going to be fed? Are they going to be having the great education? You know, can we? Is there something that the city can do to alleviate the, I've talked about this before when Rick Rodriguez was still the mayor. Uh, there is child hunger in the city of Downey that's been uh, here for a long time and it's truly unacceptable. Um, so clearly, uh, solving child hunger shouldn't be so difficult. Um, and it's high time now that you're considering children's well-being and family well-being, especially as was just said, women of color. Um, it would behoove you to think about how you can maximize the well-being of those children that will be attending as well as their families. Um, so I'm sure that there are multiple, uh, routes you could take. Uh, I haven't seen you take many of them as I have already stated. The worst part about this is that there will still be children going home to bed hungry in Downey. Um, you know, I know all of you will be fed. Um, you know, that you'll have stuff in your refrigerator, but you just think about those children and think about that fact and do better as you're considering policies that will are hopefully will be benefiting children and families. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? I will entertain a motion and a second to close the public hearing. So ordered by the mayor is our motion and a second to introduce the ordinance. Please vote.
The motion was approved unanimously.
Thank you. Uh, second item amendments to the city of Downey Uniform Schedule of Fees. Adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Downey amending resolution number one nine dash seven eight eight six, adjusting the city's uniform schedule of fees. Our having arrived, the public hearing is now open. City Clerk Duarte, do you have the proof of publication?
Yes, Mayor.
Is there a motion and a second to receive and file? Second? So ordered by the mayor, City Clerk Duarte, have you received any correspondence on this matter?
We have not, Mayor.
City Manager Levas, is there a staff report?
Madam Mayor, does the staff report be provided by Assistant to City Manager Anya DeRovis?
Thank you, Mr. Levas. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. So tonight's staff is recommending to adjust the city's uniform fee schedule that was adopted on June twenty fifth, two thousand and nineteen as part of the budget adoption process. Uh, before I go into the actual fees, I just want to provide a brief background on how fees are related to local agencies. As you're aware, local agencies are responsible for providing a variety of services to citizens. And these methods of funding these local services are also varied and most services are funded by tax revenues and fees charges. User fee charges in California are required to comply with statutory requirements of the California Constitution and the California Code of Regulations. Specifically Proposition twenty-six that requires user fees for activities that benefit specific user groups to be set no more than the actual cost to provide the service. The city of Downey adopted new user fees in January two thousand and eighteen based on the cost allocation user fee study by Matrix Consulting Group. And then these fees were amended in September of two thousand and eighteen. This past year, the city council adopted new fees from the nineteen twenty year on June twenty fifth, two thousand and nineteen. Staff is recommending to amend these fees that were adopted um, through the resolution and the exhibit A that is attached to it. There's approximately twenty-five fees that are being requested to be amended. And these include new and increased fees that are related to the fire department, the community development department, building and safety division. Um, I do want us to note a correction in the report. It says the planning division, but it's actually the building and safety, which is correctly noted in the exhibit. Also, the Parks and Recreation Department, the Police Department, and the Public Works Department Utility and Engineering Divisions. The detailed information is listed in the report and also along in the exhibit. Um, that concludes staff's report. If you have any specific questions or information about the fees listed, the department heads are available for any questions.
I do have a question. Uh, with respect to the one, uh, section thirteen, the Parks and Recreation. So on these picnic shelters, are we eliminating the hourly fee? We're making this a flat fee, eight hour rental?
Um, that is correct. Um, previously we had a four-hour minimum. And what we were finding is that people did not want to leave. And so we're making it a flat. They can be there anytime between that eight hours. So that's why we're not proposing to have a hundred percent cost recovery fee.
Any other questions?
So, hold on, if you can. So I don't know. I don't know about that. So it's just then you're gonna have one person locking that whole thing up all day long where they may not.
That is how we've been having doing it anyhow, is we were only allowing one reservation per day. And so we thought this was a lot more flexible for any of our renters. So this way we didn't have, um, somebody going in at a first come, first served basis, thinking that they would be able to have it and then being asked to move after they've already set up for their party. This way we can make it very clear that this shelter has been reserved by this party for the entire day.
All right, let me think about it. All right. That was the one I had a question on. Actually, there's another one. I had a question on the Public Works, I don't know, it's under engineering, the shopping cart containment renewal fee. There's one that says the third one, half the cost of original fee. How is that different from the one just above it?
That was actually, um, something that we need to correct. So that actually should be titled the Shopping Cart Containment Plan Appeals Fee.
Okay, the third one?
Yes, so the third one is an appeals fee.
And it's half the cost of the original fee? And that's to appeal like a denial of a submission of a plan?
That's correct. That's to appeal the containment plan. So a business comes in, submits a containment plan, the Public Works Department denies it, and that's the appeal. They then enter into appeal process and that's the fee that they pay.
Okay. That's it for now.
Any other questions? Thank you. I will now open this item for a public comment. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak regarding this item and this item only?
Fear the dark. A dark message from a dark person. Not that I'm an NWA, a nigger with attitude, but I surely can be when it comes to Prop twenty-six, twenty-ten rates. Recreation area, eight hours should be automatic, first come, first served. Now you go to parks throughout the state of California, charged for everything. When it used to be under Roosevelt, parks were for the public. When niggers come here and they want to charge you and permit you for everything that we own in this country. Everything. When you die, you have to own the dirt to be buried. When they cover you, you gotta own the dirt to be covered back upon. So like I said, we all go to hell. Every one of us is going to hell. And you shouldn't be afraid why? Fire Department, Community Planning, Police Department, under Utilities, Engineering under their Public Works, Rio Hondo Gulf, you're all going to hell. And I'll be with you. Because I know there's a resurrection and I'm not afraid to go to hell with Janice Hahn. Janice Hahn is again my new mommy.
Herman, stay on topic.
Yeah, I'm talking about my mommy Hahn. She gives us the money to fix and put in these places that I'm talking about under Prop twenty-six. And I gotta pay taxes to live under these conditions because you continue to not foresee that nothing in this hazardous material, the C E R S, California Environmental Reporting System, works. Reasonable cost for delivering service. I ask for accommodations, reasonable accommodations. I don't get large print. So like a dumb nigger, I have to stand here and scream and yell because that's a part of my renting. So like I said, while the services that are to provide specific individual beneficiaries, I'm one dumb nigger denied. And tonight, I'm letting you know on behalf of the public's interest and the public that left because you told them, oh, we're having a recess and now let's get the clean outs.
Stay on topic, please.
I am on topic. The city of Downey had generally not increased user fees and had adopted some increases based upon the Consumer Price Index. CPI. Cut pussy index. And that adjustment of consulting groups to conduct a citywide cost allocation affects the base findings from the cost allegations of the user fee study and the city council adopted that resolution.
We're taking a break. We will now reconvene our council meeting. Uh, Mr. Herman, we'd just like to continue with your comment. And Mr. Herman, make this a warning. Please stay on topic. If you cannot stay on topic, we will remove you for this agenda item only. Stay on topic. You may proceed.
Well, when our law punishes words, it's apparent. It's very apparent that we must examine the surrounding circumstance. And that circumstance is what I'm come to a conclusion about. It's in my hand right here.
Mr. Herman, on topic. You will be removed.
I am on topic.
Fees.
I'm on topic. This is the fee. Janice Hahn.
No, the fees that are being proposed in the agenda item, not Janice Hahn's fees or anybody else's.
Well, the fees come from a budget.
The agenda.
And that agenda is based on a budget. Without a budget, you can't produce an agenda. Which means anything or everything I say is irrelevant. But now I'm here to state again, the truth that you continue to interrupt my free speech. Ms. Mayor.
On topic.
What does on topic mean?
The agenda item that we are on.
Yeah, and I'm talking about Prop twenty-six. It's not a part of the verbiage on your item two amendment, but I brought it up. So the resolution of the city, as I pointed out in Downey's amending resolution to adjust the city uniform schedule fees, as I said, are unconstitutional. They're unconstitutional. We, the legislative body of America, did not make that decision. You're making decisions to punish us by raising our taxes and giving us less for the infrastructure that you owe us. And that's the reason why we have a crisis and a fuck up.
Time's up. Sit down, please. Sit down. Any other public comment? I will entertain a motion and a second to close. So ordered by the mayor. Unless there's any further discussion, is there a motion and a second to adopt a resolution? Please vote.
The motion was approved unanimously.
Next on our agenda is the non-agenda public comment. Before we begin the public comment period, I would like to remind members of the audience of the city's meeting rules contained in the Downey municipal code, which rules are located in the back of the room. The city council acknowledges the right of the public to address issues that are within the city's jurisdiction and invites the public to do so during the city council meeting. However, this right must be balanced with the need of the city council to conduct the business, the public businesses in a fair and efficient manner, free from disruption or disturbance. Members of the audience who wish to address the city council during a public comment are reminded that the city meeting rules prohibit yelling, whistling, booing, screaming, and any other outbursts that disrupts or disturbs the meeting. Any conduct that interferes with or disrupts persons who are addressing the city council. Any conduct that interferes with or disrupts council members while they are speaking and any other conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. If a speaker engages in this conduct or any other conduct that disrupts or interferes with the meeting, I will ask the city manager to have this speaker removed from the chambers until the end of the public comment period. For those who are audio or videotaping, the city's meeting rules prohibit recording from the middle aisles or from the front of the chambers. Recording activity may be performed while seated in your seat or from the back of the chambers. I remind speakers that each person has five minutes to speak and that your comments be addressed to me and not to any other council or staff member. Those wishing to speak may come forward.
My name is Alan Helstensgaard. I know it was recently in the news that someone laid hands on a law enforcement officer who was shopping in a store while off duty. The law enforcement officer responded by killing one person and wounding two other people. This is my comment concerning a law enforcement officer. Lay your hand on him, remember the battle, never do it again. These ancient words are found in the book of Job, chapter forty-one, verse eight. Those who are parents or guardians of children are mentally impaired adults should be very careful not to allow them into a situation where they could potentially lay hands on a law enforcement officer. I know a great book which I recommend you buy for yourself. Make Me Your Choice. Compelling personal stories of struggle and healing from those who have had or dealt with abortion. For info about buying the book, visit www dot destiny image dot com. Tonight I am quoting from chapter twenty-three. Post-abortion syndrome. Abortion is a losing proposition. There is no easy, safe, or painless abortion. And there is not one winning solution to an abortion because it causes the violent death of a baby's life. Abortion brings with it severe mental stress, anguish, and emotional and psychological effects that are far beyond what anyone ever anticipates, imagines, or comprehends. These consequences and results of abortion are known as post-abortion syndrome. The symptoms of post-abortion syndrome are anxiety, confusion, disorganization, hopelessness, feelings of tiredness, lethargy, anger, bitterness, guilt, and shame, extreme sadness. Recurring thoughts of the abortion or the aborted baby, inability to participate fully in life. Life becomes blocked by numbness and indecision. Long-term grief reactions, suicidal thoughts, emotional outbursts, anger or tears, isolation or withdrawal, addictions, drug and/or alcohol dependency, intimacy, sexual and physical dysfunction, and difficulty keeping close relationships. Nightmares or sleep disorders, migraine headaches, low self-esteem, memory repression, increased alcohol or drug use, compulsions to touch or to avoid babies. The author of this book knows of what she speaks. She herself submitted to the will of an abortionist on two occasions and is now the mother of four children. Choosing death impacts your family, robbing them of a son, our daughter, grandchild, niece, our nephew, cousin. Marriage causing emotional stress, guilt, and remorse. Future relationships, haunting heartache and pain. Purpose, changing your perspective about life and love. World, denying life for a future doctor, scientist, pastor, inventor, teacher. Destiny, stifling the role God wrote for you. Confronting the long-term consequences of abortion will enable you to make the right choice. Visit www dot firefighters dot org and watch the Evolution Against God video. Visit www.firefighters.org and watch the Evolution Against God video and share it on social media.
So before we start the next for Mr. Herman, before, before we start your, your time, I want to remind you, Mr. Herman, that you must speak within purviews of our city's jurisdiction. This means that you cannot have topics related to the mayor of the city of LA, the board of supervisor, Janice Hahn. It has to be within the city's jurisdiction. So if you want to speak, Mr. Herman, you may come forward.
To the suppressors of free speech, CV 127261DSF, SHX for the record, Michael Hunt versus the City of Los Angeles. No less troubling is the defendant Herman's second statement imploring to others to shoot the nigg. Let this country be fucked for another four years and because never in the history has a black person done anything right too. There are many unstable individuals in this country like yourselves, mayors of this country. When our law punishes words, we must examine the surrounding circumstance to discern the significance of those words and utterance. Congress chose against the background of public issues that should be unhibited, robust, and wide open, and times unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials, pussies, adding that the language of political arena is often abusive, inexact. So my government argues on Item 17 of this agenda that you're going to monitor and suppress our time of public comment to be heard. And you do so because you're criminals. You become involved with the corruption of the great state of California under that fucking faggot Gavin Newsom and that horrible bitch Nancy Pelosi. Thank you, Trump. And as long as I'm alive and there's a nigger behind me talking, I shall continue to possess the evil that you put into my soul, my spirit, and mind. So Janice Hahn is my supervisor now. She shall adhere to my will and bid as that bitch threw me out of a public meeting today with Ms. Barger. You have no right, no right to monitor by content of free speech. You have no right saying to me that it's unpleasant, the things I say and you are about to hear. Get the fuck out of the arena. This is a man's business, a woman's world, and now you're in it, Ms. Mayor. You are a part of the abuse to my mind. And as long as there's evil and you believe there's hope for God, I hope God comes and destroys us all like he did in Sodom and Gomorrah when men and women were lying with children and fucking each other left and right, as Mr. Rodriguez will agree with me in that revelation of sadness and hope. You see, I lived too long. I worked too hard. And for you to come in here and censor me, monitor me, and deprive me the right of free speech simply because I was born in this country, not a wetback brought into this country, I have every right to fight for my American dream, to own and possess property that is mine by a social security number, the evil devil number that you gave me in this world. God did not give me a number. God gave me a number that you placed upon my forehead and the foreheads of these individual assholes in here that don't understand life or death. It's called Satan, six, 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 bitches. And you should learn to apply what you read about God before you make statements referring to God. God wants you to be loving, caring, and knowing your neighbor, but instead you look down on them like the Sadducees and, and those fucking Jews of the synagogue, leveling your, your, your weight of gold and silver on a scale because man's life don't mean a fucking thing to the state of California. So fuck Gavin Newsom, like I said earlier. Fuck the city attorney of Los Angeles. Fuck City Hall east of Los Angeles. And as far as I'm concerned, Eric Garcetti sucks cock.
Thank you, Mr. Herman.
Good evening, one more time. So I should say, as a proud immigrant, as a proud homosexual, I am hurt by some of the words that I hear. However, I would like to remind the council that you have a flag here over on the right. So of course you have the US flag. And when you took your, your oath of office, you swore to protect that constitution of the United States. So of course that constitution grants its citizens, its people, the freedom of speech. It's, it's very important that you, you know, because if you start criticizing some speech and banning it, as you have attempted to do, you know, what's, there's a slippery slope. Eventually your own speech might be banned. And I'm going to make a, a public records request or something, or I'm going to reach out to the city attorney later because I have read the Brown Act and maybe I missed something, but I don't, I mean, some cities do claim this idea about jurisdiction, that you're only supposed to talk about things in their jurisdiction. Who's to decide what's in your jurisdiction? You know, there's a lot of things that could theoretically be in your jurisdiction. So you should not limit the, the freedom of speech of the public in the same way that the public does not limit your freedom of speech, right? This is supposed to be bidirectional, that respect, which again stems from the constitution that you are sworn to protect. So, you know, I know that all of you consider yourselves patriots, et cetera, well, maybe not all of you, but it's very important that you respect that basic fundamental construct in US society, the, the Bill of Rights and certainly First Amendment, free speech. Okay, so with that, I wanted to get to what I wanted to talk about. So it's, it's interesting, right? We're entering the election time and there is a word that people are, are talking about and I wanted, and I know that I've mentioned and that I've uttered that word at this podium. So it's interesting. I wanted to remark a little bit about it and it certainly is within the jurisdiction of the city council. So that's the S-word, socialism. So last year, when, you know, many community members were here, they were demanding a little bit of help. They were demanding that, you know, you help them out with these unreasonable rent increases. It didn't even get to a vote because, you know, some of you had conflicts of interest and the other ones, you know, you, you claimed to be immigrants and, I mean, you are immigrants, some of you, and then you somehow gave that as an excuse that, oh, if you're, if you're not making it as an immigrant, it's because you don't have enough jobs, you know, if others, some of you put yourself to college, you know, people are supposed to be able to do that now, even though of course the costs of, of college have gone way up, the cost of housing have gone way up. So that was really unfair and unreasonable for you to do that. But of course, the people were talking about socialism because under socialism, what would the people get? They would get guaranteed housing, you know? There's socialist countries that have essentially solved the problem of quote homelessness, even capitalist countries, Germany. But of course, in the United States, we don't have that, that ethic, unfortunately. We're trying to develop it. So that's why I would like to actually recommend to anyone here and anyone watching that you certainly vote in the upcoming primary. I hope that you vote for Senator Bernie Sanders if you're in the Democratic primary because he will guarantee housing as a right, whereas, you know, all of you are clearly not interested in that. You'd rather have people living on the street. It's truly disturbing what you all did. But thankfully, as a result of people like Bernie Sanders and I myself, of course, I'm running openly as a socialist, just like I did last time, for Al Faraq for Congress. But there's so many young people that are getting interested. I've been contacted by young people in Downey and they are going to run for the city council and they're going to run socialist and they're going to deliver the change that all of you have been too cowardly. You've been discompassionate and we're going to fix everything that your system has broken. Thanks.
Hello, me again. So I just wanted to set some policy records straight. I know, Mayor Plachekka, we had a brief interaction, but with SB 50 is concerned, what SB 50 does essentially, it's, California's great at regulation, we're not good at reform. And what this bill does across the state is it reforms how we look at housing. It ends exclusionary zoning by upzoning along major transit-oriented lines. It doesn't take away local control. Cities do have two years to basically amend their general plan to accommodate for that and it doesn't, and it does not have exceptions for smaller counties like Marin County. I actually have a map on my phone right now showing parts of Marin County that will be upzoned as well. Environmentally, I think Downey has a lot of potential to become an environmental champion citywide and be a leader in this area. At the end of the day, if you oppose SB 50, you're also opposing major environmental reform. We cannot keep continuing building the cities the way that we have been because when we do that, we have decades of bad housing policy, which has led to redlining, displacement of lower-income communities, making it difficult for people to live where they work. And as a resident of Downey, it really disappoints me to see you either misunderstanding what the bill does or misconstruing what the bill does. And I really firmly would love to see if the city doesn't want to oppose, if wants to oppose SB 50, what's a better alternative for us to build our city densely, reduce the vehicles miles traveled so that way people can get out of their cars and on to their bikes and be walking from their house to the store to school? So what can we do if you guys are not going to endorse SB 50? What can we do as a city to make that happen? I think a great idea would be protected bike lanes, not just, you know, bike lanes where cars can kill people. Protected bike lanes. If we're going to, I understand that under the new Rina regulations, we're going to have a lot of housing units to build. How can we build densely? How can we make it easier for homeowners to turn their homes into duplexes, allow them to build ADUs? These are all great ways that we can allow expansion of building homes in ways that gentle, I call it gentle densification, and allow more people to stay in the communities that they grew up in. I know, for example, that if we, city of Downey had been doing their fair share of building housing for the past couple decades, we probably wouldn't have a situation where people were evicted from their homes and they had nowhere else to go. As of right now, we're facing an all-time low vacancy rate, which is not good because it means that there's little mobility. People cannot move as freely as they would like to, which also means that because there's a lack of housing supply, rents can be go sky, skyrocket, skyrocket, and people will end up becoming displaced that way. And that's something I would like to see the city take an active role in and you guys all have the power to help shape the city grow in an environmentally sustainable way. And I'd really, and if you guys are going to oppose SB 50, I would love to see alternatives that the city would put out to make sure that my city is green. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we, is there any other comments from the public?
Madam Mayor of the United States, council members, Mr. Levis and staff, good evening. My name is John Lacy. Madam Mayor, I have four items on my agenda this evening. The first one has to do with the changes that occurred in the juvenile court system over the last couple of years. My comments are based on a report by a retired judge who was the presiding officer at Los Puginos. My comments are in here, or his comments are in here, and I'd like to give it to the city clerk to distribute, to the council members, and also to the police chief. Assume that we have a pendulum and on one side is public safety and the other side is rehabilitation. Prior to the changes in the court system, the pendulum swung towards the side of public safety. We had the courts, we had the police department, we had the district attorney, we had the probations. A juvenile was brought before, arrested and brought to trial before a judge. The judge obviously rendered a decision based on the merits of the case. One of the positive things about that approach was that there was enforcement of rules if that behavior was not abided by. There's a law enforcement of that. Now, over the last five years, the pendulum has changed. The pendulum has now swung in terms of rehabilitation. What has happened now that many of the court filings do not go through the district attorney and therefore to the court system anymore, they're given to the probation department. Problem with that situation is that there is very little recourse with the probation department for non-compliance with the probation rules. Another consequence of that was because of the fact that there was reports that juvenile crimes were down. Might have been a misnomer, just that the juvenile arrests were not included in that stats and it would give possibly a misleading information to the public that juvenile crime has been abated. Another consequence of that is the fact that they closed the Los Puginos courthouse because of the low court filings. Another major thing occurred in August of last year. The Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors voted to approve a new agency or a new commission called the Youth, pardon me, the Youth Development Agency. And the intent of that, and they're still formulating the plans of putting that agency together, the intent, the general intent of this is to eliminate the courts, eliminate the probation department, and put in the hands of what I would call social workers to determine the judification or the, the aftermath of approximately the 20,000 juvenile cases that arise every year. The key component of that, it looks like there is no law enforcement component to challenge any non-behavior along that account. So what I would suggest is that if the city council has not looked into that particular situation to address the issue, add your input to it and contact Janice Hahn with regards to what the council feels about that issue. I'm all for rehabilitation, but if there's no tough teeth behind it, then you know what that leads to, possibly an increase in crime or drugs, and also would possibly would allow the adult gangs to get their lower juvenile gangs to commit serious crimes because the consequences of being caught for juveniles would possibly be a lot less than for the adult gang members. My second agenda item, Madam Mayor, is that I would suggest the council consider limiting the amount of public time for public comments from five minutes to something like three minutes. My time is up.
Thank you. Any other members of us?
Hey, hi there. Going to keep it just brief. Look, sometimes I hear things in politics from both the audience and people in power that they say... both the audience and people in power, that they say things that are either untrue or distasteful, and I completely understand. But when you begin to attack the First Amendment, it leads down a slippery slope that other people have already talked about. Now, limiting the time here would be, it wouldn't benefit the constituents from getting their points across.
It's an item on the agenda if you wanna hold off to your comments. We're gonna be discussing that at a later point, if you wanna discuss it at that time.
Hmm, sure, why not?
Okay, but we will be discussing that item on the agenda.
Yeah, no, definitely.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Thank you. Before we, motion to close public comment, second?
Make a motion.
Okay, before we go further, I just wanna mention to the members of the audience that I apologize again for the profanity that was used by a member of the audience that came up and spoke. I don't believe that that's how we should conduct city business. There's a time and a place. As to the language, I understand freedom of speech concerns and that is important. That is important for me and also for the rest of our council members. But it is also inappropriate to use language that is offensive to others. So it's not something that we condone here at City Hall. We do not condone that type of language. I will never say that type of language. I don't even use it when I'm at home. That's just something that I take personal pride in, to be able to talk without using offensive language. So again, I apologize to everyone here in the audience for those people that were a little squeamish because of the language that was used. So now on to our public comment. I'm sorry, the consent calendar.
Second?
Actually, are there any comments from the public on consent calendar items only? And this would be the consent calendar items that are in our agenda.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Brian Hayman. I live in the city of Downey and I'm all for reducing the public comment period from five minutes to three minutes.
Actually, that's gonna be an administrative report. So we'll be going on.
Very good. Okay, what is up at this point?
Right now, it's just the consent calendar only. And then after this, we'll be discussing the administrative report, which will be the, that matter that you wanna discuss.
The agenda, okay?
No worries.
I thought 17 was one of the consent calendar.
No.
Three, three through 16 are the consent calendar items. So the comments should be limited at three through 16.
Thank you.
See, I was fucking right. We're on fucking consent calendar. Look at number three. It goes back to the minutes. Go back to page three. A gentleman from Encino, Wayne Spiller, spoke on behalf of the urgency ordinance of no-fault eviction tenants. And you heard the general public comment from that nice woman who destroyed you, told you the facts. You don't give a fuck about immigrants. All you care about is fattening your fat asses as you sit there and suck up this shit. Same shit I talk about all the time when it comes to madam.
Mr. Herman, which item are you discussing?
Well, we're on consent items.
Which one?
And I'm discussing the minutes. It says approve the minutes and if you go back then read, evictions and tenants is part of the discussion, particularly on page two, in which my discussion of how I felt about evictions and tenants, the way Downey treats wetbacks and minorities, the way you treat all of us in the community because you do shit behind our back. That's why you closed down four parks all at the same time. Ain't that a bitch? And the whole summer I got to stay in the cold. And now the cold heart of what you get is what you're gonna hear. More free speech thanks to Donald Trump. But on item 13, the ordinance of the city council, am I on topic or do I want me to give you the item once again, Ms. Mayor?
You can actually give me the item again.
Numero trece. Pero yo me gusta el primero, First Amendment. Entonces, el disorderly conduct, article for public welfare and morals. There's no morals in the city of Downey like Los Angeles. Los Angeles has influenced corrupted politicians to fuck us on our taxes.
Mr. Herman, stay on topic.
And policy, I am policy. Disorderly conduct of the Downey Municipal Code 4133, 4133.1, and 4133.2, vote Trump of chapter one of disorderly conduct, 'cause the community development report reflects what I'm saying. Now, as far as the other portions of miscellaneous driving rules, fuck 14. As far as adoption 15 item of the legislative platform authorized by the mayor, fuck the Pro Temp and fuck the mayor, bitches. Item 16, authorize street closures. Well, you fucked up all our streets when you measure ass, fucked up all our parks, and you fucked up all the infrastructure, and now people are driving in traffic fucking mad as hell, getting home 15 minutes late and missing their opera. Then you go to item six, award construction contract and the amount of 1 million and a half to select electric incorporation for the Stewart and Gray Road fiber optic traffic signal. Well, fuck fiber optics. It doesn't work. If it did, my computer, my lights, my electricity and everything connected to this shit wouldn't cost me so much money under measure our funds. It should be a project allocated to help poor fucking people, help people under a capital improvement enjoy services. I do not enjoy services when I'm taxed for things I do not receive. I don't make the same income as you, as you see. I, like you, have an emotional disability. And you spell it S-T-U-P-I-D, stupid. So now that I got the mayor's attention, stupid, let's finish off on one more items because at the next meeting, they're gonna take your time away from you, put you down to three minutes, and you can't rant and express your opinions of resolutions of the city and the city of Downey approving applications for grant funds and fucking up our community. But thank you for one thing. You're doing right with the Columbia Memorial Center. Thank you, JPL, for burning the, burning the fucking ozone and bringing in those gamma rays to kill us all when we're in a drought and there's no more water and it's all contaminated 'cause all you fucking want is technology and we're killing ourselves. There's no green and there's no clean air. Suck it up through a straw, bitches.
Thank you, Mr. Herman.
So I have, I would like number 12. So could the city attorney give more information on what that, what that's about?
Okay, I'll let you speak and then we'll be able to answer your question.
Okay, sure. So items quite simply, I mean, I didn't see it back there. What is this? An ordinance of the city council of the city of Downey amending Charter 11, the campaign finance reform regulations of Article 2 of the Downey Municipal Code. So I would like more information on what that means because of course we wanted to go, campaign finance reform is something that we're talking a lot about throughout the country and certainly here in Downey. You know, basically, we want more transparency in campaign finance reform. And there's a lot of ways to achieve more transparency. For example, actually today, I went to the Paramount City Council and I requested public records on this exact issue. So I don't think a citizen, a person should be required to go all the way to a city council and go through that process. Rather, of course, it should be posted online. So I don't, the Downey website is kinda confusing 'cause it has all those little menus, but it would be great for more transparency to be achieved. So in whatever you're doing here, it would be wonderful to add more transparency and more accessibility for the public. Maybe you could even go above and beyond whatever perhaps you might be required to do by the state. You know, you could perhaps translate those documents or just make them a little bit more understandable for the community. Of course, we have many, say, Spanish speakers and other languages. So that would be a good thing. I'm just wondering about that one. I was also wondering, where is it? So number 13, you know, it seems, you know, more information on that, I think, again, would be great. I feel like so many of the time, so much of the time, these consent calendar items just kinda take the public by surprise 'cause of course there's not much content about what's in the ordinance that is provided here. And it's just kinda this wall of text. Perhaps it would be nice to have little summaries of what this could mean, but you know, disorderly conduct, of course, you know, how do you, you know, define that, you know, again, I was hurt personally by some words that were said here earlier, but I would not call it disorderly conduct. I would just call it free speech. So you know, what are these words that you have here? And public welfare morals? So is the city in the business of legislating on morals? What exactly does that mean? We need more information and it's not quite transparent. So yeah, it would be great to get more information on those two items before you vote on it. Thanks.
I'll let, any other comments from the members of the audience? Okay. Second? Okay. I'd like to now let our city attorney make a comment as to item number 12.
So item number 12 was actually presented two weeks ago with a very detailed staff report, PowerPoint presentation, all of which are still on the city council, city website. That was an introduction of the ordinance. The city has an existing campaign contribution, campaign, the voluntary expenditure limits. That was an ordinance adopted in 2011. Since then, the state court decisions and state laws have changed, which required us to go back to this 2011 ordinance and make the necessary changes so that it is in compliance with the current state of the law today. And we wanted to do it before the campaign season starts to ramp up. So if you are interested in the full-blown presentation that was done two weeks ago, you can find that on the city's website. This action is on the consent, it was not on the consent calendar item last time, but it is now because it's just an adoption. Last meeting was an introduction with the presentation, so it's on consent for adoption. And item 13, I'll let community development director talk a little bit about that, but public welfare morals, policy disorderly conduct, those are, those are titles of chapters in our municipal code. We're not regulating disorderly conduct. On the contrary, we, here, we're regulating shopping carts. So I'll let community development director talk a little bit of what that item's about.
That item is a second reading, same thing. It was discussed thoroughly last meeting. They had PowerPoint presentation and slides. This is the adoption, second reading. It's on the website as well. So this is a consent, if you just go to our website, you'll see it. It's on the agenda. Just pull it up. It's not very confusing at all. It's right on the agendas in council. It was on the last meeting. You can actually also look at the streaming or recording of that meeting if you want additional information as well on it.
Thank you. Now, is there a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar?
Madam Mayor, I need to abstain from item number six. I own property with 500 feet of that.
Any other abstentions? Okay, there's a motion and there's a second. Please vote.
The consent calendar was approved with Councilmember Rodriguez abstaining from item number six.
Next item is an administrative report, amendment to the rules of conduct for the city council meetings related to public comment. Introduce ordinance number 20, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Downey amending Downey Municipal Code, Article 2, Chapter 1, Section 2105, regulating the rules of conduct for city council meetings. City Manager Levis, who will be providing us this report?
Madam Mayor, the presentation, the sign will be by our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager and Mayor and Council. This item is pretty straightforward. The item proposes to amend the city's meeting rules, to change the five-minute public comment period time limit, change five minutes to three minutes. That would mean that three minutes for non-agenda public comment and all the other opportunities that the public has to comment on items on the agenda would be limited to three minutes, not five minutes, as is the current rule. With that, I'll take any questions that you might have or any comments, suggestions that you might have on this one.
I have a question. What is the norm as to city council meetings as to the amount of time allocated for speakers?
Well, in this area, in this particular region, three minutes is pretty average. Every city conducts their public comment in their own way, based on their own customs and their own rules and their, and their own community. But in this area, three minutes is pretty standard. We also have an appellate court ruling that said, recently, that says three minutes is reasonable time limitation for public comment.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
So for me, my question would be, do we have to do it for every single thing at the same time or can we adjust it? Like for, you know, one, one type of comment can be a certain time and then other comments can be another time? Or does it all have to be uniform?
It's council discretion.
So the reason why I bring that up is tonight, listening to everybody, I was kinda timing everybody, just mentally. During the non-agenda public comment, most speakers use their time. During anything other than that, public hearings and the consent calendar, most speakers did not use five minutes. They kept it under three except for one. So like I still think that non-agenda public comment can kinda cover a broad variety of issues that can come in and people can be passionate. I would be hesitant to limit that time, but I think for the consent calendar items, I think for public hearings, administrative reports, I think it would be good to cut it to three.
Any other questions or comments? I will now open this item for public comment. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak regarding this matter?
Brian Hayman. I live in the city of Downey. Mayor Pacheco, first of all, I want to congratulate you. Outstanding job as mayor. You are so diplomatic and kind and generous of your time and respectful of all of us here, as are all of your colleagues. And none of you are doing this for the money, obviously. You spend time away from your families, from your churches, from other activities, and as we've learned recently with the tragic helicopter crash that killed Kobe Bryant, his daughter, and others, our time on this earth is finite. It's not infinite. And we need to treasure every minute. And you're providing us a gift, all of you as council persons, of your time to the city of Downey. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart for that. I am in full support of reducing the public comment period from five minutes to three minutes. And I would go even further than that. At the Board of Supervisors, they have it set at three minutes, but it's elastic in that the chair of the Board of Supervisors, Janice Hahn, and most recently Catherine Barker, have the option based upon the volume of speakers on a particular topic. For instance, during the rent control discussion here, we had numerous people wanting to talk on that. In the Board of Supervisors, when there's that many people queuing up on a particular issue, the chair, at her discretion, has the ability to limit the discussion from one minute to three minutes. So it's elastic based upon the demand for speakers. And the way that is managed during the Board of Supervisors meeting is they have board clerks who actually get the names of the individuals they want to speak and what the topic is they want to speak on. And then they triage that, determine how many people want to speak on each topic. Then information is actually transferred to the chair. And then as that item comes up, if there are 100 people want to speak on it, they don't get three minutes. minutes. They get one minute. Sometimes they get less. And they don't hesitate, the chair of the board, to cut the speaker off, cut the mic, and then the clerks move the person aside. And it makes for a very efficient meeting. I was surprised at how efficient it is. Hundreds of people sometimes come to speak before the board of supervisors. And I was stunned at how quickly it moves. I told supervisor Hahn, my supervisor, after one particularly lengthy meeting, I said, "You really make the train schedule run on time here?" And she says, "Yes, I do." And supervisor Barger does an excellent job, too. And I don't think you, as a body, should be so risk averse about, about litigation, about worrying about getting sued should you need to eject somebody. Your city attorney has done a wonderful job establishing the rules that you need to follow, warnings, et cetera, before someone is physically ejected. And in my understanding of the rules, I think, Madam Mayor, you could have ejected this evening on more than one occasion. And I admire your forbearance in, in not doing that. But don't worry about the lawsuits. We're in a litigious society. And quite frankly, it'd be worth it to me for the city to, to pay a jerk like that $5,000 every once in a while. Okay? Just for the pleasure of seeing him ejected. Okay?
Yes.
And I'm not naming an individual. It could be anyone. It could be anyone. It could be anyone. It could be anyone. I'm not naming an individual. In fact, I could be a jerk at times. And if I ever have before you all, I apologize. And I also want to apologize for speaking so loudly sometimes. I don't really even need a microphone. I've got a hearing loss, too many years on a airport flight line and on a flight apparatus. And my wife tells me that I don't listen to her. And I say, "Honey, I, I listen. I just can't hear you," which can be a blessing at times. Makes for a long marriage, thirty-five years. But I'm not going to take any more, more time. I, I think three minutes is, is plenty of time to speak. But I would really consider expanding upon it and make it an elastic one to three minutes based upon the demand of the speakers and the topic. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Hello yet again. I really just came to give a policy recommendation for childcare. But I did not realize that this was on the agenda. I understand the concern of wanting to limit the time. But as someone who has also worked with helping young students and helping college students, and also people who've never spoken to city council members, city council meetings like this before, coming here for the first time can be very intimidating. People get nervous. They sometimes use notes. They lose their way, they lose their way. And I understand that sometimes the city council meetings can get a little disruptive at times. But I'm concerned that if we start limiting time, we also work away from an equi, more equitable city council meeting. The reason why I came here was to hopefully give my two bits of information to make a more equitable city for women of color and their children. I'm here, again, to making sure that we don't lose time, valuable time for people who struggle with English as a second language. This is the first time at a meeting. They're not sure. Sometimes people get lost. People get nervous. But that's, I, I would hesitate to limiting the time. I think three minutes is too short. I think four minutes, if anything, should be the minimum reduction to. Because I've been to like other city council members or like county supervisors, one minute really is hardly enough to make your point. But I feel like if you need to, must, try not to limit more than to, like, take away two minutes. I think that's a little too drastic. But thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
I'd like to submit these for the record.
So, the arena now is controlled by a racist fascist prejudiced group of individuals who want to limit us to our presentation of public speech, the same as that two cunt bitches from the board of supervisors, Barger and Hahn. You know, I only got thrown out in ten seconds simply for saying fuck white niggers too. Under CV twelve seven two six one, DSF SHX, Michael Hunt, the red chief versus the city of Los Angeles, Ninth Circuit winner. And I was tossed out. Ten seconds out of one fucking minute. Sixty fucking seconds was blown to ten seconds. And that's what they're gonna do to all of you. That's what they're gonna do to all of us. That's what our government has been doing to all of us all along. Dummy down our education, dummy down our services, make us feel like we're unwanted and that we need them. And like little crying bitches, we come to the podium here and like the jerk behind me, they say, "Oh, my wife don't listen." Well, you don't listen either. You don't listen to none of our shit. Because if you did, we wouldn't be in the predicament of what Gavin Newsom and the bitch Pelosi from San Francisco, as you heard the minister earlier talk about, how Pelosi and San Francisco fucking trafficking faggots are fucking up the community over public comment.
Stay on topic. Stay on topic, please.
I'm going back to what I was saying. It's all about public comment. Because trafficking suppresses free speech. Now, had these trafficking women or men or queers or steers under the LGBT would come here and say something, then we would know that there's a correction in the time they present their issue. But see, now, you're suppressing us all equal. So, we're all fucking faggots. We're all equal. And because of Hahn, Barbara Chalata, all they want for you is to reelect them and put them back in a position where they haven't done shit.
Stay on topic, please. This is the ordinance.
And for that reason, those presentations we have consume all our time. All our time. We're here forty-five minutes in presentation. Some of them go as long as fifteen minutes.
Mr. Herman, stay on topic.
It is topic. You need to take those presentations and limit them to maybe once a week and put them in, in a timeframe of less than five minutes. Yes, our fire chief deserved, and his staff deserved, a longer time. Our police chief deserved a longer time, along with that Maserati or that fucking Ferrari that I keep asking for him. However, let me go back on topic. Straightforward, as the city attorney said, oh, well, let us copy the criminals of those corrupted cities and follow their rules, policies, and practice a pattern of abusing the public through monitoring your speech on time, censoring your time, and prohibiting you on the time that you should be allowed to speak. Now, if you bring a white motherfucker up here called a C for Caucasian, he gets all the time in the world, even goes over a minute into his, his discussion. That's what happens at the board of supervisors. Those white pricks get more time than minorities, blacks, and Hispanics. Check it out for yourself. Go down there and observe. See, ho, one side treats the other side on that time. So, I don't like staying up there in Pasadena to ten or midnight like Terry Tornick had me there. But like I said, every racist community has its time. And I demand that you shelf this condition until you post it on the Sentinel, the LA Times, whatever fucking publication of paper we have besides the Patriot, and see if people agree to this time change. Because as you see, there's only a few individuals here tonight after nine oh five, and you're gonna shut it down and stick to your own fucking plan. And that's to censor us, monitor us, and take away our five minutes which you allowed. And when I came here in the beginning, I had a minute on every fucking item, and you changed the regulations.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to comment on this item?
Thank you. Hector Schmin, one two two four six Old Rivers School Road. On the item of time, I agree with the gentleman, the elasticity of one minute, three minute, or five minutes. Simple management issues, just give everybody equal opportunity of free speech to come up, address their concerns, their thoughts, their issues. Some individuals come up here who suffer some disabilities, and they will tell you, they suffer disabilities. And they always got to keep that in mind. There are those who are suffering disabilities who come up here to speak. I'm one of them. I'm one of them. Oh, as far as the, the management suggestion, it's like you maybe have simple lineup, number of people behind you, and then use your discretion, one, one minute, three minutes, five minutes, depending on the number of speakers. Last time I was here, I was early in the week, and I forgot to say happy new year to everyone. God bless you guys.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Okay, just to be clear, I hope this, the city council will not limit the voices and free speech that the public has. Let's be clear. When a person has enough time to get their thoughts across, it's not only to get their ideas to you, but it's also to hold every single one of you accountable. And by limiting the time, you are shortening the accountability that you owe your constituents. So, this shortening the time would only benefit the people in power, which currently might be you right now. But anyone sitting on those chairs needs to be held accountable for whatever they choose to vote or whatever they choose to side with. Second, what studies have you guys done to show that we need to increase Because that's the argument that I'm hearing from everyone tonight, that there's not a lot of efficiency, that we want to maximize the amount of time that people get. But by the way, you guys have, on average, small meetings, and there doesn't seem a requirement or a need or any evidence, unless you guys have it right now, for you to be trying to decrease the time based on this notion that you're just trying to incorporate more voices. That is just not the case. Finally, since when does the normal, what other cities around this, matter to you? By the way, you guys were just talking about your choice of power in this jurisdiction. It, it doesn't matter what other cities do with their time. Simply if we're gonna go on, if we're gonna go with the argument that we had to have control of our jurisdiction or what we do here, then apply it to everything you say, not just when it's convenient and not just when it seems to benefit you. So, finally, I will say, a gentleman said that, hey, last time I was here for rent control, and there was a lot of people, and we could have used a lot of people talking. By the way, not only did all those people get a chance to talk, but they got to speak from the heart and from, from where they were coming from. Allowing them to speak more allows them to convey their information better. So, again, if you guys shorten the time, this will be self-serving ultimately. Because it, it takes away our ability to hold you guys accountable. So, that's it. Thank you.
Do my council colleagues have any questions or comments?
I have a comment. So, I'd like to place this a little bit in a, a little bit of a larger context. Of course, you know, when cities put something like this on the, on their agenda to be changing the rules of, of the public meeting, that usually comes not out of the blue. It comes from being prompted. So, of course, everyone will remember, at the end of last year, the council members refused to help working class families who were struggling with rent increases. And so, the families came here because they thought that their city would be willing and able to help them. Of course, they were, the city council members were able to, but they were not willing to. So, but that was a great exercise in democracy. And again, you are supposed to be upholding a constitution that guarantees a freedom of speech and that really promotes it. It promotes the freedom of speech. In fact, the Supreme Court has spoken many times on that. The constitution itself promotes the freedom of speech. And the first time when I came here to speak to you, I actually started off my comments with how, with how happy I was to see that you were giving people five minutes. Because unfortunately, the surrounding cities would rather cut down on people's time to, to contribute to the democratic process. So, that was a really great thing that you guys are standing up and saying, "We're gonna give the people five minutes because the people deserve to be heard." These meetings only happen twice a month. It's certainly not enough to address every topic that comes up in the, in the course of being a citizen in the, in the city. You know, the people should have a lot of time to, to speak. And you should prioritize their comments. Those are your true constituents, your true, your, those other constituents who you know, maybe you have private meetings with and all that, that's unacceptable. Times are changing, especially, you know, those of you that still have time, were to be reelected. You shouldn't be standing up for less freedom of speech for the people. The people want more freedom of speech. We want the time up here. And let me just say, again, this is coming from a political reaction to what happened last year. And put yourselves in the opposite shoe. So, in, in the upcoming elections, when the progressives, the socialists will triumph in the Downey city council elections, all of you are going to be coming up here, and you're going to be, you know, wishing that you had more time. So, you know, don't do this to yourselves, to your future selves. You want to be able to address the electeds who in future times won't be you. So, you're, you would be doing a disservice if you were to vote for this. I get it. Maybe you don't, you don't like me. Of course, I know all that. I can see all your faces. But again, this issue is an issue that you are sworn to defend and promote. You're not supposed to restrict it. If you restrict it, you're standing with the King of England, right? We fought a war of revolution to guarantee this right. It's unacceptable for you to be promoting less freedom of speech. So, and even in a larger context, again, coming from, it's gonna be election time very soon. You don't want to, Ms. Mayor, I'm supposed to be addressing you directly, Ms. Mayor, you, as the Downey's first Latina mayor, you should not, I hope, be like, say, our California's first Latina in Congress, our congresswoman. She has stood up to suppress freedom of speech, right? She has co-sponsored bills to take away freedom of speech, specifically the freedom of speech to criticize certain countries, notably Israel. No, Americans should be able to criticize whatever country they want and whatever group within our own society. This is part of our democratic process that we file a revolutionary war to defend. So, you should defend it. If you don't, you're gonna be sorry.
Thank you. Any other comments? I will now close public comment. Is there any further discussion for my council colleagues?
Oh, I know we discussed this a few years back, and it was, it was, you know, a tough discussion. But I gotta say, my feelings haven't changed. And back then, I, I didn't support it. And for a few reasons. I think that as painful as it is sometimes to hear certain, certain people say, you know, certain things that we all cringe, you know, the fact is, we have to balance the right of the residents', right to free speech versus efficiency, as, as one of the speakers said. And that's true. But having said that, I don't think that limiting or reducing the time i, is gonna make that much of a difference in efficiency. We had about probably twelve speakers tonight. Reducing two minutes to each speaker, it's a total of about twenty-four minutes. Twenty-four minutes really gonna make a huge difference in our lives? I, I don't think so. I think what hap, what's happening is we, you know, you know, those who may, you know, support it, may be thinking and rightfully, you know, understandably so at times, thinking that this is gonna change the type or the content of the speech, when in fact, it's gonna make no difference. The person or the people that make the type of speech that we all, you know, don't necessarily agree with, but they have a right to say, this is not gonna make a difference. So, in situations like this, I'm gonna veer on the side of giving the residents more time than, than less. I think that, it was funny, the two speakers. I think that, it was funny, the two speakers, who we know well, who were in support of reducing to the three minutes to call five minutes. So, I mean, that tells you something. And, you know, I also think that, you know, everyone that comes up here, it takes a lot of courage. It really does. I said everybody, not most, most everybody. It takes a lot of courage. I mean, before I was on the council, it was, you know, it was a little nerve-wracking to come up. Having said that, it does take a few minutes, you know, seconds or whatever you may call it, to kind of get your thoughts together and whatnot. So I, if I have to, you know, balance and kind of decide, you know, between efficiency and the right of people to speak, I have to support maintaining the people's right to speak. If you have 10 speakers, reducing about 10 minutes, two minutes, that's 20 minutes. That's not gonna make or break us. As much as we cringe, I mean, we all sign to the dotted line, we have to take it and I just, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a good message frankly, so I'm not gonna support it.
Would you like to speak? No? Any other comments?
So, I mostly agree with what you said, Councilmember Saab. I feel that it is our job to be here to listen. I feel we have certain people that abuse that right. And that's the part that bothers me the most because I think it makes most of the others that come up kind of the byproduct of one person abusing the system. You know, transparency was brought up. You know, when I look at transparency, I don't look at it as just time here. Like, this is one moment that people have their option to talk to us, but that doesn't limit them. They don't have to wait for two weeks to talk to us. I mean, I know, like, you know, like even today, I dealt with something, a lady was complaining about, well, they're tearing down this wall on my street and they're gonna turn it into a thru street and I'm gonna come to the council meeting and I'm gonna talk about it. And, well, let me find out, you know, because it was just something there and, you know, I emailed, you know, Delfino and Mr. Kunsugi said, "No, that's not the plan" and everything was taken care of. And the lady, you know, not that I wanted to keep that person from coming to the meeting to speak, but sometimes, you know, transparency is not about just coming here every two weeks. So I felt that I had to say that because I think even if whatever happens with this, that it's still our job to respond, not just during the five minutes, but the other 23 hours and 55 minutes of the day as well generally to at least, you know, we're up here doing what we do for very little pay to listen to concerns. But again, as you said, this is kind of what we asked for because we went and did this. So...
Can I say something about that?
Yeah, yeah, please, please.
I think the only problem with that argument though is you're making a presumption, as we all do at times, that those people know how to contact us, they have the means to contact us, whatever it is. So the thing is, you know, it's a city hall, it's a people's house. I think, I think, you know, many people would just, you know, and some people want to see face to face.
And I agree with that, you know, and I'm not trying to say that, you know, that's, I just, my thing is, it's not the only time that people have.
I agree.
And for me, it's, you know, like, I'm okay with people coming here and talking. I wanna hear it because I don't know everything and there are times when I'm learning from what, I mean, what the lady in the back was talking about with the daycare center stuff. I'm gonna be talking about that after we're done here because I found value in that. And, you know, I don't know everything and I think having these moments help, but I feel bad because we have one person abusing that privilege to just waste time. And I'm gonna be honest with you, you are wasting our time. Like, when you came, and I'm gonna direct this to you, when you came the first couple of years, you spoke on ADA issues and that, Mr. Herman, and I, you know, I might not agreed with certain things, but I, you know, when you were dealing with that and talking about that, you know, I would do what I could to help. You've moved on from that to just kind of using this time to abuse our system and just to get, you know, use whatever time you have to say whatever racist, politically motivated, whatever things to incite people just to hate you or hate us or hate whatever, just there. And that's, I think, where this is all coming from. You know, I just want you to understand that the reason why that this is coming is because, I'm sorry, that this is, uh, just something that we're trying to deal with and I would appreciate honestly, the old Herman that would come and talk about actual issues in our city versus this Herman.
The problem with that though, Councilman Ashton, is we're bending over for 113,000 residents for one person. And that's not fair to 113,000 residents.
It's not.
So as much as we may disagree, and I know we're all on the same page on this, and we're all trying to figure out, you know, how to make it, because it really makes it undesirable for people to come and participate and I get that, but, you know, democracy has a price and that's the price, even though, you know, some people advocate socialism and in socialism you wouldn't get, you know, this kind of free speech, which is comical to me.
That's communism.
Well, okay, but nonetheless, it's 113,000 residents, you know, for one person, it just doesn't make sense to me.
And I agree with that. I mean, this is a tough thing for me to have to consider because I really feel that one person has kind of ruined it for everybody else, but I do agree with what you're saying.
I just don't think, if I may speak, Madam Mayor, I don't think we are limiting. I think that we are being reasonable in our approach. I think that we continue to support freedom of speech and we want to continue to serve our residents by inviting them to be part of the process. And for a very long time, we've had these five minutes and as we've discussed and as is laid out in this new proposal is, we can, it is at the discretion of the council, we can give more time depending on the item and have that liberty. I believe three minutes is a reasonable time. We are here to conduct the people's affairs and the people's business regardless of whether one individual is here or not. But my, one of the things that we have discussed is precisely, people in our community, the 113,000 you mentioned, Councilmember Saab, is a lot of the people that come here and they have to sit here for two and a half or three hours, 45 minutes of which is one individual ranting about issues that have absolutely no business being discussed in this council chamber, end up having to walk away because they don't want to listen to all of those words that, those inflammatory words that are offensive. And I think three minutes is reasonable.
It's a warning. Next time you will be kicked out.
It is reasonable. We are conducting the people's business and I support this move, considering it will be adjusted accordingly for individuals that need more time to express themselves or to discuss an issue at greater depth.
I don't think we're inviting people to come up, it's the right to speak. So I don't know if that's the right term to say inviting them. I think they have a right under the Brown Act, under the Constitution. And, you know, as much as we disagree with, you know, the content, we can't, we just can't regulate it. And it's okay because who are we to judge? Who am I to judge, you know, what's on topic and how much it should be on topic? You know, maybe it's just the lawyer in me, I don't know, but I think this is, you know, you can call it whatever it is, but it is limiting speech because we're cutting it by, you know, 40, 30% of what we have now, so I just can't support it.
Any other comments? So I just want to mention that I believe that what we're doing here today, what this ordinance would do is not limit freedom of speech. Other cities in our area have the time of three minutes. I believe that's more than enough time. I do appreciate all the comments and I do know that if we need to allow you to have more time, you will be allowed to have more time if necessary. But I believe three minutes is more than sufficient time to get your point across and if we need to continue the dialogue afterwards, we can continue the dialogue afterwards. I always have an open door policy. I'm here at City Hall, my office is on the third floor, so I always invite everyone to visit me because like Councilmember Ashton mentioned, we don't want issues to be brought up only during council meetings. And I understand, not everyone knows how to contact us, contact us, but I'm hoping that individuals do know that they can reach us over here at City Hall. So again, I believe three minutes is more than sufficient time because I do know some residents actually do not want to come to our council meetings because there's an individual that uses such vulgar terms that they cannot stand being here. And so, and that's not the only reason why I would like to limit the time. I just see that it has worked in other cities. And also, if it doesn't work in our city, City Manager Levas, can we increase the time back up to five minutes if it does not work?
Look, certainly, look, these aren't difficult issues, right? So you're always balancing the public's desire and right to speak with that of conducting meetings that are open to people, that people feel comfortable being at as well. So it's a difficult dilemma to be in. But to answer your question, yes, I mean, it's at your discretion, you know, you can, if you want to bring this item back, you think it's not what you want, you can certainly bring it back to go the other way if you wanted to or modify it in some other way. That's really up to the council's discretion and how you guys want to approach it.
That's not likely to happen. That's unlikely to happen.
Is there any further comments? Is there a motion and a second to introduce this ordinance?
Still the motion fails?
No, the ordinance requires three votes in favor to introduce, so the motion to introduce the ordinance passed, three to two.
The motion passes with Councilmember Saab and Councilmember Ashton voting no.
Thank you. City Manager Levas, do you have any comments?
No, I don't have any comments after that particular vote, so thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. The meeting is now adjourned in memory of Staff Sergeant Ian McLaughlin, 29, of Newport News, Virginia, and Private First Class Miguel A. Villalone, 21, of Joliet, Illinois, who were conducting operations part of NATO's Resolute Support Mission. Sergeant Kayla Sullivan, 43, Nassau Bay Police, killed in the line of duty. Sergeant Christopher Brewster, 32, Houston Police Department, killed in the line of duty. Officer Carr, 27, Fayetteville Police Department, killed in the line of duty. Officers Tiffany Enriquez and Kaluki Kalama, Honolulu Police Department, killed in the line of duty. Neil Perd, drummer for the band Rush. Ron Irwin, former Downey Fire Chief. Harold Leklannis?
Leklannis.
Longtime Downey resident. Ada Guadarrama. Kobe Bryant, American professional basketball player. His daughter, Gianna Bryant. And the seven passengers who were onboard the helicopter that crashed over the weekend. Meeting adjourned.